Thank you. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the August 29th School Committee meeting. Thank you for signing in on TV and thank you for the people in the audience here today as well. First of all, I just want to welcome everyone back to a new school year. It's actually an incredibly exciting moment for me personally, but I think for the committee and a lot of other people that you work really hard year by year, a little bit through the summer as a school committee, and now it all begins. And if any of you have ever experienced the time in a school system or walking into a new building or a new teacher meeting, you all of a sudden hear some nice, great, active buzz to what our buildings are all about. So it's a very exciting time for us and thank you all for signing in and welcome to our new school year. First on the agenda is open public comment. I have two people signed up in advance. Before you sign up, just making sure everyone knows the parameters about it. Open public comment is an opportunity for the public to comment to the board. Each person has three minutes. I'll keep you on that line as well for that three minutes of public comment, and then we'll go on to the next person. So thank you all for adhering to that to the best of your ability. First is Russell Reardon. Please come on up to the front.
Actually, you know what I'm also saying right now is I actually want to hear what's going on today before I make comments.
So you don't note, no comment today at all?
Right now, no. I just don't want to go out and handle no groups.
Thank you, Russell, agreeing not to stand or sit for public comment. Thank you. Next on public comment is the second and only other one, Andrew Steele.
I think I'm also going to wave mine. It sounds like there's going to be a forum for what I was hoping to talk about tonight.
Well, thank you. We expedited the two public comments. Thank you for coming. Thank you for coming. Next on the agenda, so we're ahead in time already, is approval of minutes. I think in our packet we had an executive session minutes as well as a regular session minutes. So first is, I think first in our packet was the June 27th meeting, regular meeting.
Correct. I have nothing to add or that to.
Nothing as well. I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes from the June 27th, 2023 School Committee meeting. I second.
Any further discussion? All in favor? Four zero. Thank you very much. I probably should have said that School Committee member Rob Canfield is not here tonight, so it is a four oh vote for today. Next on the agenda was the executive session meetings from the 24th of July.
I have no comment on those?
Yeah. No comment?
No.
Any, no? Some, like the motion?
I move to accept the July 24th executive session minutes as presented.
I'll second.
Any further discussion? All in favor? Four zero for the executive session meetings and they'll be released. Thank you.
We also have special.
And then we have the special meeting minutes which was following the executive session meeting for July 24th.
Thank you.
I have no questions. I'd like to make a motion to approve the July 24th, 2023 special meeting minutes.
Second.
I do have one comment before we voted finally. I'd like to add, we did have discussion briefly about the school calendar for the year, our school committee meeting calendar, and at that time, we discussed adding a date, simply adding a date for a forum of September 26th. So I think it should be noted in the minutes that the committee had discussion about school committee dates for the year and adding an additional date of September 26th for a public forum.
I'd like to amend my motion that we approved the minutes for July 24th, 2023, adding in a discussion for adding a date for the public forum for this, during the special meeting.
In that case, second.
Second that. So we have that amended, just the discussion that we added a date to our school committee calendar. Any further discussion? All in favor? Four zero. Thank you very, very much. I think next, next up, we have superintendent's update, back to school update. Lot of good things that I think you'll get updated for us. I was fortunate to welcome the new teachers last week, as well as welcome all of the teaching staff here to the school system for today as well too. So I was able to participate a little bit with you in the back to school. So Dr. Burdos.
Yes. So we did have three days last week, two and a half days actually, with new teacher orientation, with our educational assistants and our professional staff, which was a great two and a half days. And then this morning, we welcomed our entire district back in the high school for really our official opening of schools. And that was with Mr. Pearson, as he said, doing remarks on behalf of the school committee, and then myself, and then all of our normal, typical kinds of convocation activities during the day. And then principals had all of their staff meetings this afternoon and going from this morning as well. So it was really a great buzz that you could hear and feel across the high school auditorium with so many people excited to see their colleagues after the summer, to be re-energized after the summer and ready for a new school year. And it was just, it was a great day. I think that the building leaders, the principals have done such a fantastic job this summer in getting all of the hiring that's done from our retirements that took place. And we have many new faces, some that have moved buildings or moved grade levels or roles, and they are really excited about their new adventure, if you will. So that was a great way to start off the morning. You'll be hearing from one of the other agenda items about our facilities and reopening of schools and getting ready, the amazing work that they've done. The buildings look absolutely spectacular from our technology staff, all the behind-the-scenes work that they've done. You'll hear about that this evening as well. Overall, we have 29 professional staff that are new to our Foxborough school family and nine educational assistants and one administrator with Jen Holmes, who's the assistant principal at Foxborough High School. As far as staffing, we do still have a handful of staff, mostly educational assistants, that we're still in the process of hiring, but we're in pretty good shape to be ready for students on Tuesday of next week. So that's really exciting. As far as some other updates, school safety, we had, you'll hear some of it, I think, in the updates from the building facilities area, but some cameras that have been added to the athletic fields at the high school, some other work that is slated to be completed in the month of September that has to do with entries into central office and then the IGO building as well. I know that Mr. Yukna will be speaking to that a little bit. The other update that I wanted to provide, so a communication went out from myself and from the town as far as the migrant families that will be housed in Foxborough. And just to give a little bit of information, I really don't have much new information other than the communication that was sent out, but I do want to make the point in that any information that I get, Mr. Pearson is your chair, I'm in constant contact with him. As soon as I got the word, I immediately reached out to him as your representative for the school committee. So the community should know that the school committee is being updated just as much and as frequently as I'm being updated. We have a task force within the town and we know how wonderful, supportive this community is, and the emails and the phone calls have shown that, that have come into the schools, that have come into the town side, and people asking, what can we do to help? And at this point in time, what we're saying is to continue to be patient because we are getting information as it comes in, and we want to make sure that we're able to support the best that we can, but in a way that's going to make the most sense. So at this point in time, as part of that, the task force, so we have the town side, we have public safety, we have Deputy Chief Tom Kinven, who is working as far as the public health nurse, human services, the building commissioner, myself, all of us are meeting weekly with what is needing to be communicated so that we are all communicating consistently, which is really important, and at the same time as we're hearing different things to be able to provide that information so we're all on the same page, if you will. And that is really on a day-by-day basis. The information that I receive that is pertinent to be able to send out, I will send that out as soon as that I have that information. As of a half hour before coming to the meeting this evening, what I had learned is that we've started to have a handful of families that came in yesterday, but out of those families, we do not have any school-age children. So that's the other part in speaking with colleagues, because there's many other towns that are housing migrant families that are coming in, and what I have learned from some of them is that many of them are much younger children and not necessarily school-age children. So as we hear that information, our building leaders, they are, they are ready to do what needs to be done and welcoming, and then I know that our community is as well, but we will communicate whatever those needs are because we know there's a lot of people that have reached out and said, what can I do to assist? And I think that just really speaks to the volumes, the volume of this community and the support that we've always seen, so it's not surprising. But at this point in time, I don't have any other information other than what was in that communication and that we are expecting 93 families, and again, so far, the families that have arrived do not have school-age children, but I know that we will be ready in the schools.
Paul? And this is not, this, and I won't go down the road too far into hypotheticals, but I'm just curious. In, does anybody know if in situations like this, neighboring communities have pooled to hire staff, or is it meant to just be shouldered by, like, for example, if us in a neighboring community had need for a full, an additional ELL teacher, again, all conjecture, is that the type of thing that is like job sharing across districts allowed?
So I'm working directly with a person with, from the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, and so we also, with the funding mechanism that is immediate, we're not having to wait there. So any staffing, if we're needing to do anything relative to increases in staffing, we will make those changes as necessary, but at this point in time, we've not needed to make any changes because we, we don't have any additional information.
That's fair.
I will say as far as on the municipality side with some resources as part of that task force, they're talking about what are the supportive resources from town to town that can be leveraged.
Fair.
So there is that piece. There's a lot of communication from community to community.
Okay.
Any other questions? Well, I just want to thank you for notifying me right away on behalf of the entire school committee, but I wanted to reassure anyone watching from home in our audience today that we will, we will remain engaged and active with the superintendent as a part of this. When something like this comes to a community that is a little different experience for us in the community, I think as a school committee member, we were aware and ready to, to understand and learn more and support as needed. So I just, you know, wanted to reassure everyone that we will stay engaged and I really appreciate the immediate dialogue because this is how things happen. Things happen quickly nowadays, don't they? And one person knows, then two people know, and then everyone asks the school committee members quickly. So, so thank you very much for that communication and thank you to all of us here just now coming in with open ears and open minds to experience and understanding of this. Thank you. Thank you very much.
All right.
And good luck to everyone in the opening. It's been a lot of hard work and preparation in the summer, so appreciate all that you've done to make this opening happen.
Beautiful segue.
There we go. It's all about segues. That's pretty good. That was pretty good. So if we could, at this time on the agenda, we have an update on the summer work and the preparation for the opening of school. We have Mr. Yukna to lead with Aaron Hayer and Tony Mazzoli. Come on up, guys. And as, as they're walking up, if you, if you don't pay attention to these meetings annually, this is pretty much our annual update. We've gotten this, you know, every year pretty consistently, and certainly, I know you've always been available to us throughout the year to update as necessary, but in advance, we so very much appreciate the effort and time put forward to plan it out and execute, and we look forward to hearing about what happened.
Great. So first, I'd like to start off and saying, this is really exciting for us to come and have this opportunity to talk about all the work and preparation for the school year and really to welcome back our, our students and our staff. So over the summer, it's always a very collaborative process in terms of there's a lot of moving pieces and a lot of coordination. So I'd like to thank our staff and the technology department for all their hard work, but then also the support that we get from the central office admin staff, all the school building admin staff and principals, as well as maintenance facilities and the custodial staff, because with all those partnerships, we really wouldn't be able to get all the work done that we do over the summer. I think often when it comes time for the summer, we, we get the, I sometimes call it the honey-do list, right? And people think that the summer's really, really long. It doesn't feel that long for the staff that's in the building over the summer to get that work done. So with that said, I'll get right into some of the, the work that was done on the technology side. In terms of computers this year, our staff refurbished approximately 350 computers. We updated just about all the classroom computers now that are left to 16 gigs of RAM. So those were done as the computers were reset in the classrooms and updated for the school year. We also replaced about 100 computers as well that still fixed, fixed computing that are in classroom spaces or in small group instruction spaces. In terms of preparation for the school year, we finished off the year completing our student information system rollover and upgrade, getting Power School ready, building all the school calendars and scheduling, getting the system ready to roll the school year over, and also preparing our digital learning apps for the next school year as well. In terms of infrastructure, replacing approximately, some of these, some of the things I'm going to share with you, they've been started, they're in process. We're still having quite a bit of struggles in terms of getting equipment, receiving equipment. The supply chains are still very, very slow, but we're in the process. We just received them recently, 100 new access points, so we're replacing all the access points at the high school, as well as some of the access points in some of the other schools, the middle and elementary schools as well. And then we also, over the summer, upgraded our internet bandwidth to a five gigabyte fiber handoff. So that's, it's a 500% increase over what we had last year in terms of bandwidth. And this is especially important as a lot of our technology has moved to, you know, software-as-a-service, moved to the cloud with Office 365, as well as a lot of our digital learning apps. In terms of security, we're, we're in the process of implementing a new enhanced 911 system. This system will allow us to transmit very detailed location information into the building, to the, to the regional 911 center when a 911 call is placed. So instead of, you know, giving a zone within the building or a wing in the building, actually giving specific location information like classroom 102, and then also being able to provide, you know, detailed information in terms of like exterior doors that first responders can use, as well as directions in terms of in the, in the building, as well as a pretty comprehensive security camera system installation in the turf field area at the high school. There's cameras for the, you know, concessions area, as well as wireless access point and wireless internet coverage outside the concession and the grandstands as well. We've been in the process of implementing multi-factor authentication, so I know that just about every time you turn on the TV, you probably hear about cybersecurity. You know, schools have unfortunately become a primary target of cyber threat actors. So unfortunately, we've had to, had to respond, right? Especially as we've become more reliant on technology for instruction and for teaching and learning. So we're in the process of implementing multi-factor authentication. So what that is, is when you log in, you use your name and your password, and then also an additional authentication step, so that that could be in the form of a time-based token, like a number generator, or a phone app, or a text message. So we'll be implementing, fully implementing that in the fall. One of the other projects we had this summer is in process. Hopefully, we'll get finished up in the next couple of days. This was a grant-funded project. It's installing a projector and audio system in the IGO cafeteria. So this, this is a pretty fun project, actually. If you've seen how they use it, they, they're going to use this equipment in the cafeteria to do like movement breaks with students during lunch. So something they've been doing for quite a while, so this will be, I think, a welcome addition for them there. So along with this, there's all of the regular kind of ancillary technology, things that are happening during the summer. You know, I call them ancillary, but they're, I guess they're primary in terms of, you know, supporting the, the maintenance that happens in the building. So every summer, I think as Tony will share with you, there's a pretty comprehensive maintenance process in the building in terms of cleaning, which results in just about all of our technology being removed from classrooms so that that process, that clean process can happen. And then there's, there's the process of getting it put back into classrooms and getting it set up and making sure that it's working, and then it's tested and ready for, for staff to come. So, you know, we talked about all the, the additional kind of new projects and capital projects that we, we do over the summer, but it's really a huge task alone, just kind of supporting the, the summer maintenance to get the buildings ready. And this is on, this is also why I was supporting, you know, like ESY programs and extended learning programs as well. Again, just want to thank our staff for, for making this happen. I mean, they really work really hard. This summer, actually, just in the last couple of weeks, we onboarded two new staff members. So we've been, been a little bit shorthanded this summer, but still managed to get quite a bit of work done, so want to thank them. And again, thank the support from, from all the building admin staff and clerical staff that, that, that worked with us during the summer and facilities and maintenance as well.
Awesome. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks. So I want to start off with the same thing, you know, you know, the support from everybody. We couldn't, I couldn't do it without any of my staff and custodial and all that because they really worked very hard this year. And a tough year and a lot of vacations, and that's the year, you know, everybody takes off at the beginning of the school year, but we always seem to get it all done, you know. And this year, we did, like Aaron said, every room comes apart, floor gets stripped, you know, everything gets washed, all the furniture, and then it goes back in on a nice, fresh floor. The burrow is a little different over there. There's no wax on the floors, but we still take everything out of the room. We wash it really good, and then we burnish it with like diamond pads to get the shine to it. So you walk into that building, it smells like burnt rubber at the burrow. But that's how, but basically, a lot of the stuff we do every year, a lot of the shampooing and cleaning and painting. This year, we actually got to do a lot of painting in-house too. We do some, we do, we sub some out, but we did a lot in-house. The guys, you know, having that extra week getting out of school really made a big difference for us, and we got to jump on it and, and the guys real, I gotta say, the staff and also with IT, I mean, everything in facilities now is probably with IT now because nothing's, everything's IT work. But we also, we are waiting for, you know, we also do the regular stuff too, like we replace all the filters and all the unit vents, all the rooftop units. We grease everything, you know, just to kind of have it ready for the year. And most of the time, we do very well, but there's all those times that you, motors burn, our bearings seize up. But, but we, we got it all done, and that's, that's what it's all about, and cleaning and just going through the buildings and, and just taking step by step. And we got, we did finally get the scoreboard up at the softball scoreboard over at the high school.
Great.
And we did the scoreboard, the screen, the electronic sign for the IGO.
Nice.
We got that done too. So we got quite a few things. We also did, I believe, five to six floors over at the IGO. At the old section, we had like the VCT tile, which that's an older part of the building. So, you know, it's on, it's on wood, so it's always moving, and if you get it wetting. So we, we've come up with using this nice rubber that we put on there, so it actually moves with the floor, and it needs it. That's also floor that you don't have to wax, you know, so it, it helps the guys out, but you still have to take everything out. So we did quite a few rooms with that, and we did the bathrooms too, because they were just getting to the point where they just needed to be done. So we did that, and we're just like, you know, all the gyms got them all sealed and everything, urethane, and also the waiting for material. Half of, half the, half of the projects that I had, and we ordered this stuff before even school got out.
Right.
But it's just, it's just how it is. Some stuff you get right away, and some stuff you gotta wait forever for it. And also, you know, in the, in the, it's hard to get contractors to, not as easy, available as they were before. We still get them. We have good contractors around and everything we preach, but they're very, it's almost like you gotta get them in and get them out, and they're off to the next job, and so. So we've done this for a few years, so it's pretty much the same, same stuff every year. And like I said, we have a lot of other stuff coming in. We did the building automation system over at the high school. So that one is just about done. And like I said, if it wasn't for Aaron and his crew on that one, I don't know what we'd do because I don't, I'm not like a, you know, IT savvy, but. And that's, you know, like I said, it's about it. You know, we've done a lot of it, you know, do all the playgrounds.
It's a lot. It's a long list.
It is. It's a yearly thing you gotta do.
Right.
It's great.
You need to do the little extra, the little extra projects that go with it, but we just finished, like I said, the mulching of all the, the playgrounds, that's a big thing, you know. And we've gotten better over the years because we're not using as much mulch because now we got more rubber.
Yeah.
So it actually, it works also. Now we can give it a good, you know, so. And that's it. I mean, if you guys have any questions or anything?
I would, I would take a, there's a couple of other things. The, you know, the, we had two, we've been going through the, the buildings, as you know, for, on the school safety side relative to entrance ways, and high school last year got a major replacement with school guard glass with a second man trap type of scenario to make it a much safer environment to be able to have people access to building. Obviously, the burrow was built that way. The ahorn, we also upgraded last year to have a similar thing. We've ordered all the stock to, as to Tony's point, on things that have been outstanding for a total renovation of the front of the IGO for the same exact scenario. It hasn't come in yet, but it's supposed to be coming in soon, so we'll just have to figure out timing on how to do it either nights or weekends or whatever. But once we do that, then we will have effectively the, the buildings into that condition that we're looking to try to get to. As you know, the tailor is currently up for a full renovation, and they would redesign the entire front when that happens as well. But we feel comfortable, we've got the, at least the glass that's in there is wired glass, it's protected, it's not something that just blows out.
Yeah.
So we, we feel we have some protections in there at that point. The ahorn chiller, which was a project that we had struggled to get the materials for, finally came in, in the spring of last year and fully operated through the whole summertime. We replaced both chillers, so that's, last time we did that was 20 years ago, so obviously gives you an idea of what the lifespan on that equipment is. It was nearly a $500,000 project by the time we were done, but the town supported us on, on being able to come up with the money for that. Very fortunate as far as transportation, we've got all our buses this year before school started, so our fleet is actually the best it's been in a number of years, and everything's registered and ready to go. As Tony said, the, you know, things on boilers and stuff like that, we have, we're doing some work on the, the ahorn boilers, which is scheduled to be done, but based on trying to get contractors in different times. They'll be in shortly, but well before the heating season, so we're not too worried about that. In the, we started a process last spring, which we got about halfway through, which was the fitness center at the high school, the equipment. The other half of the equipment now is scheduled to be mid-September to come in, and that will be completed, so we will effectively have done the entire fitness center over the last year and a half time-wise. So I, I think we've done pretty well there. Other than that, I think, you know, we do have to thank obviously the IGO PTO for their support on that message board, which we hope to actually have live in the next day or so. It's, everything is there, we just need to get the internal people programmed into running it. And, you know, as, as we said, a lot of, a lot of updates on, on general stuff. I will second what Tony said as far as the custodial staff. When you walk into the ahorn, as an example, the entire building was painted. Every single hallway was gone through. We haven't been ever able to do this. Every custodian, once they were done with their areas of duties, chipped in and started painting. And we just never have had that, that kind of timeframe. We did a lot at the high school as well, which looks really good. You know, but every building was getting touched up all the way through the district. And I think that makes a huge difference when parents and students walk in the building to see, you know, the marks and the nicks and the, you know, any kind of damage corrected and fixed and hopefully to stay up on it. So I think that's basically where we are now.
Correct me if I'm wrong, I, I think I heard the, the high school is going to be 50 years old, is that correct?
That would 1974, right?
1972.
Seventy-two.
Yeah. The last year was 50.
Last year. So I mean, for, for a 50-year-old building, it, you really, it's really amazing. I mean, you- I mean, you, when you walk into the building, you don't say, this is a 50-year-old building. I've, I've worked in a couple of school districts before coming here to Foxborough and, and the way that they maintain the buildings here is second to none, so.
Well, I will second that. I've worked in a number of different buildings as well and seeing it on the, the town end aside, it's, it's why we're not always paying for repairs into our buildings, because you all take care of them, take such good care of them. And for those that remember, when we got struck with the whole COVID schedule change and everything, we were able in a position to start up school where other districts couldn't. They actually literally couldn't safely get the kids into the building because you all take such good care of the buildings regularly. It was just business as usual with a whole new set of regime, of, of safety regimes, but the building, it wasn't a question of safety of the building. So I'm just always impressed and always need extra paper for my notes in this particular meeting because the list is always just so long of everything you do.
We also repair things and not like, you know,
Yes.
patch it. You know, it's like instead of taking a mo, no, we're gonna put a new motor in, put a new belt, put, you know, instead of just saying, well, let's get the motor rebuilt or let's not, you know, just.
Proper repair.
If you fix it right from the first time, you don't have to do it twice. And that's.
Exactly.
What we try to do.
I also appreciate how your respective staffs all just have a all for one, one for all attitude and attack a problem in a particular spot or building as, as, as a whole team as opposed, instead of just a faction. It's wonderful.
That's what it is, is teamwork. Everybody, it's like everybody has, puts a little of everything in and makes, makes a great district.
And also, you have to also understand with everything they just told you they did, they still supported the town side at the same time. Please fire and everybody else. So they don't get to walk away from that responsibility, obviously all the concerts tech is, is involved with and things like that. So they have to continue that part of their job as well as try to get this, the heavy lift for the schools done during the summer times.
It's impressive.
Two, two quick plugs.
Please.
If, for parents, if you haven't already downloaded the School Messenger app, recommend downloading that to either your iPhone or Android phone. We'll be sending out some information via email the next couple of days, just to, to remind people to do that. It's kind of one-stop shopping. You, you'll get push notifications for all the emails that are sent out via the district or the school level right to your cell phone. That, that includes the snow cancellation calls. I know with, with kind of increasing regulations around, you know, calling and marketing and things like that, with cell phones now sometimes blocking, calls, they might show up as spam likely or go right to your voicemail. If you have the School Messenger app, you'll get both the email and if there's any voice message for like snow cancellations or emergent updates, you'll get the audio as well pushed right to the app too. So that's a, a good way to guarantee that you get all the latest current information. And then also in the next few days, we'll be sending out information about our annual student information update, which is where we ask parents essentially to update any emergency contact information and then also to review updated handbooks and policies as well. So it's really important that we have that information so that we can get you the information that you, that we need to get you and then if there is an emergency that we have that information on file.
Thank you.
That's it. Thank you.
Any further questions?
No, thank you for everything that you do. You make me want to take a tour of all the buildings now. You make it sound so great. I'd love to see all the changes.
Questions?
No, thank you so much.
Well, first of all, I just wanted to, to highlight what Mr. Yorkness said about the custodial staff, all hands on deck, showing up to whatever building they could. That's really important for everyone to understand that they all have responsibility for their buildings. We know that and they know their buildings inside and out, but then to take that extra time and go to the other building just to make sure the whole package works, which is truly, we talk about it for educators, we talk about it for our vision for the schools, we're all in it for the same school system, so it's really quite appreciated. It really is. Then the second thing that dawned on me was going through the technology. I would love to rewind the building update from 15 years ago and maybe just 10 years ago. Think about it. I mean, did we talk about 500% increase in speed? Did we talk about 911, you know, location to small units of the building? Did we talk about multi-factor authentication 15 years ago? Probably not. So it's kind of extraordinary what we have to do nowadays. It, it really is. We have an update that takes 15 minutes and it, it's almost, it's, it's kind of amazing you can actually do the update in 15 minutes for all that really takes place nowadays and what we're responsible for, because all the stuff is still there, right? I was, I'm looking around the audience, a bunch of us walked around the high school when it was brand new. Because we all walked in and it was less than 10 years old. We were all walking in that building and I would actually say, walking into it now, it, it looks pretty similar. I mean, you can all nod and disagree, but I, I think you would agree. It's amazing how much that building and all of our buildings have held up from this kind of care. It really is great. So thanks for all your work.
Thank you.
It really, it's huge and it's such a benefit, it's such a pay forward, it really is. So thank you so much. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, yeah, congratulations, yeah, thank you. It's kind of, it's absolutely amazing.
Yeah.
Really, so much that has to get done, just to get, I didn't mention rubber floors. How about the rubber floors now? We don't have to wax floors now, we have special floors, you don't have to wax.
Awesome.
Yeah, changes like, changes like on a dime. Is it on this topic?
Yeah.
Thank you.
I meant to mention that, um, I found out that they split up the teachers' room in the custodial supplies closet at the high school. My insights from people.
Thank you.
They split it up so that the teachers don't have to sit there when they're having their lunch, looking at or smelling custodial supplies. Mr. Fuller told me about that.
Oh, that's a good idea.
I saw him over the summer at the town pool, he told me.
Just one more thoughtful, considerate way these people are helping everyone out, everyone pushes in.
Like they have, they put a wall and then they put the door than I heard.
Good teamwork.
I saw it when I was there the summer, picking up shredding from Mansfield shredding at the end of July.
Great. Well, thank you, thank you.
Thanks, Jim.
Next on the agenda, we have Dr. Donovan in to speak to our student handbook changes for the upcoming school year. Welcome and thank you.
Good evening and thank you. So I'm here tonight to just present the handbook changes or to answer any questions that you have. Our changes this year were put together by our school council, so just want to take a moment to, if I may, to just thank our school council members. They were wonderful. Our staff representatives were Dr. Waszlewski and Mrs. Geffers, our parents' representatives were Mrs. Daly and Mrs. Ernst. Our student representatives were Nathan Erman and Sophie Straken. And our community rep was Mr. Weber from FCTV, who was incredible. So I presented to the members of the committee, I'm very thankful for Mr. Pearson, that's typo or two, and so those are corrected. So the new packet has those corrections, which are very, very minor. I wrote six and then putting the number 10, I think, in a bracket in one spot and then there was one sentence that was cut and paste, so it was construed backwards. The, the changes largely, as I said to you, are, the biggest ones are about our attendance code and just kind of our procedure for reporting absences. And the, the impetus behind that change is really because we want to improve student attendance. We have, I wrote in a newsletter last year to our families that we had had up to that point, I think nearly 6,000 absences by March. We were, and we were averaging at one point just under 900 absences a month. And so what we really wanted to do is to, to kind of bring, to try to tackle that and to really focus on having students be in school and also to have what would count towards credit loss be the excused absences that are, that are under the policy that the school committee has for attendant, for what meets, what constitutes an excused absence. So the changes in there are really designed to try to increase the accountability around attendance because we want our kids to be in school. When you think about the number of class periods a day that a student misses when they're absent from school, those numbers become astronomical really quickly. So that's the impetus for the change. I really want to thank our members of the school council who helped kind of work through this and improve it. We took it to the faculty, we did a parent night, one night, Mrs. Donnie was there, was during a girls' basketball playoff game, so we, we didn't have a huge crowd, but we got some feedback along the way and I'm appreciative to everyone who had input on it. And I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Any major questions from anyone?
No, everything looks pretty.
It's thorough.
Yeah?
So before, before, thank you, one minute, one more thing. So you just said to, to help with absences, right? So I think the messaging that, that we want to talk about is such the great value for getting there each and every day. And I guess I'm preaching, I know I'm preaching to the choir, to the principal, but I'm just thinking to our community, it's just so critically important to avoid absences, avoid learning loss, avoid the non, the non-opportunity for moments with teachers and students to engage. That's really what this is about. These are words and policies that relate to it.
Absolutely. And our goal is really like, students, like staff, like, like all of us, right? There are times where people are gonna miss school and we understand that. What we want to make sure is that we are, we are incentivizing our students being in school, that they're, that they're there, that if they're participating in co-curriculars and athletics, that they're there during the day to be able to participate after school. And because the, the amount of contact time that we lose when students are out for prolonged periods of time is significant. And so we, we just want our kids to be there and, and when they're there, we know they'll do better. And that really creates a lot, creates a lot of stress in families, it creates a lot of stress in classrooms and most importantly, it creates a lot of stress for, for students when they have to manage all of that. So we want to do a better job of communicating with families early and, and getting ahead of that curve. And so we think this will help us to do that.
And I think there's great clarity in this about how and what to do with what and when to do it, right?
Yes.
So as, as I'm reading all the things that are part of this policy, it's about, you know, an excused absence or a college visit, there's, there's great clarity there, which is very helpful to the parents and to the students. To know what to do, what to bring in and what to put on file.
Yes, and we, we, we took a step of expanding what would be excused absence to include college visits because we know kids are gonna miss school for college visits in junior and senior year. That's a, that's a natural part of the process. And so, and we also wanted to do things like modify a tardy, so like a student's tardy because they're going to the, to get their braces adjusted, that shouldn't count towards discipline and the old language, that counted towards discipline. So we, we wanted to make sure that we are, that we're accounting for things appropriately in a way that is appropriate for students and also still creates the same amount of space for students to be sick or to a family to take a couple of days and go somewhere. That's not, that's not going to trigger any, any issues, right? There's, there's plenty of days over the course of the year where that, for that to occur.
And the only other final thing I'll mention that I noticed, I think we increased the responsibility for tardiness. So there's a very small window for tardiness, which I think is probably to support that if students are gonna participate extracurricular or outside of the school day, represent the school and be part of the school unit outside of the school day, that they also gotta be in the school day.
Absolutely.
So there is a tardiness.
And it's, and it's also, so to that end, to use the, the example of going to get your braces done, to work on, the student will leave the office with that note, right? And if we could leave two or three days for that stuff to come in, it may never, it will likely never come in. So, and all of the materials could all be submitted through the Safe Arrivals app. So however it comes in, whether it's in actual paper or it comes in digitally, it's, it will all work. So we want to make it as easy for families as possible to get the information in.
Any more committee questions?
Two.
I won't forget.
One, Rod.
Thank you.
And either for you, Dr. Donovan, or Mr. Ernst, or anybody else. Where, where did you see as your committee did the work, were there, were there toughest areas to hammer out, if there were any?
Um, I think we, I don't want to speak for Nathan, so you can jump in and correct me here. I, I think it's just about prioritizing, like what's our approach gonna be?
Okay.
And the other thing we did was we looked at the attendance policies of other schools in our Hockamock League to see where we had similarities or we had differences, because we don't want to be an outlier. And we want to make sure that we are approaching it the same way other schools do, as far as like the number of days or, you know, whatever the workflow may be. So I think what we, before getting into like language, we took a look at where we were compared to other schools in our area and started there. And that was probably the bulk of the work that we did.
And then a more smaller subset of a question. When it comes to the language around college visits and supporting that, is there also when and then where it comes up, similar mechanisms for people who would be interviewing for jobs, looking at other avenues outside of college as well?
Yeah, so there's, um, uh, you know, there's that language at the end there about like, or anything else. And so that's in that category of anything else.
Good, thanks.
And a lot of that stuff, if it's through our school and career counselor, that would be through the school, it would be covered anyway.
Awesome.
So.
Thank you.
Very good.
If there's no further questions, we would like a motion to approve the.
Sure.
I think to approve the edits to the handbook or, yeah, to approve the edits to the Foxborough High School student handbook.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the proposed handbook changes for 23, 24 school year by, presented by Dr. Donovan for the Foxborough High School.
Second.
No further discussion, all in favor? Four zero. Thank you for your work.
Thank you.
Thank you to the school council for all their work.
Thank you to the school council too.
Thank you, the school council for all that.
Thank you, Nate.
Yep.
For being part of that too.
As if you weren't busy.
Nathan is everywhere.
Next on the agenda is a vote to approve our 2023, 24 district goals. To, to anyone viewing this, the meeting right now, and again, to the audience here, we worked on, we work on these goals annually. It's one of our goals of our retreat is to discuss what our goals were, are, and where they are going forward. The, the value to the goals, to the community, I don't see it as simply just words. It's, 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 it's to, to set the foundation and where we stand, where we stand together. And, and that, and then that pervades itself through everything that's done in the school district, as well as our evaluation of the superintendent and our work. So I always think this is a very valuable activity for us and I don't know if everyone always knows that.
It's also, I'd just like to add, it was a great, it was great to do, it was a new face this year with Michelle.
Right.
It's always a great reminder, it's like a reset button. It's you're just starting from scratch and you're building back and reminding yourself of why, why we're here, you know? So I love it.
And some we maintain, some goals we maintain. We maintain some annually because they're very worth repetitive, repeating or they're multi-year, right? So, yeah.
No, I appreciate it. No, it's, I was actually gonna echo what you said, Mr. Chair. It's just, I, I've been pleasantly surprised that it's a genuinely fresh look at these things every year, making sure they still match the direct, the direction that the community is looking for and the direction that the school wants to go and then making, you know, putting it in, in, in language that makes it action-oriented and something that we can all expect of each other and the community can expect of us. So I appreciate that.
All said. I know Mr. Canfield worked on these goals with us, so I know he's not here to vote, but we still, our goal today was to accept these goals at this meeting. If someone would like to motion acceptance of the goals.
Mr. Pearson, may I just?
Yes, please.[1664.08]
Add, not, I think it's important to note that not all school committees have their separate goals. So, this is something that I think is, it's not unique to Foxborough, as there are school committees that do, but there's many that don't. So, I just think that it's important for the community to know that it really speaks to the level of involvement and commitment of this committee, and the alignment to our plan for success in all of our district goals under those four pillars as well, that there is great alignment, and that it leverages back and forth between them. And that's, that's a really important piece to really understand. So, I know with my colleagues in other districts, when they're asking about school committee goals, it's like, absolutely, yes, they have goals. We go through them annually through a retreat, they're on the website, they're there. So, I think it really is an important note to make, that it is for the school committee that's really representing the town here.
Thank you.
Appreciate that.
Anyone?
Okay. I make a motion to accept the 2023, 2024 school district goals, as written.
Second.
Second? You got second?
Yes, he did.
No further discussion, all in favor? Four zero vote, thank you, we've accepted our new goals. Thank you very much, and good work on that, everyone. Next, a review of the school committee agenda items. What this is, again, for those people, if you've never seen this before, there's a bunch of items, many items, in a school district that are repetitive, that come around, that they need consistent updates and some planning. So, this is our, pretty much our agenda, our items that we kind of plan for monthly. Obviously, there are moments where we will switch things as the course of the year goes along, move one thing forward, back up one thing if that happens. But, this is kind of a general schematic and plan that we've done for many years to just keep our focus, I guess, that's the best thing I could say, right?
Cover all the bases, right?
Yeah, cover all the bases. And I know for school committee members, it's very helpful to us, and when, when we have an item or a question from someone in the community, we can actually go to this and kind of say, yeah, that will be part of the February discussion, or the March discussion, because sometimes we just can't remember off the top of our head. So, I know I have found value in that regard. Any discussion about that topic?
No, I think that.
No, I appreciate that.
Yeah, the only thing I'd like to add on the topic of agenda, and we touched on it before, is just the role of the Parks and Rec liaison adding that to the agenda, so it's its own itemized thing. I usually do a wrap-up, or whoever, you know, going forward, whoever is the liaison, if it comes a day, it's not me, just to sort of bring back and be a reminder of, that we should keep everybody looped in and on the same page.
You're saying put it on the agenda as a formal item?
Yes, yes, as a recurring.
No, that's fair, sorry, I appreciate that.
Because pretty much every meeting, I'm making some type of update, or at least checking in, and there is some crossover for the rec and the school. I mean, there's consistently crossover, so, which is why I have the role. And just to clarify, I am a voting member of, and a full voting member of the Parks and Rec Board, and it is, and there's bylaw, to have a member of the school committee also be a sitting member of Parks and Rec Board. So, I just wanted to mention that.
Well, I don't know if we want to think about it, or have continued discussion. Any, do you have any thoughts in particular?
None.
So, my only thought on it, I would offer this, the work you do is great, and the updates are fabulous, and it's a great, it's a great relationship that we have with Park and Rec. But, my only thought, my only thought is that the position is appointed by the school committee to represent the school committee and the schools on the Park and Rec. But, the Park and Rec agenda, the Park and Rec plans is not part of the school committee. So, there's a piece of me that, that, there's a bunch of other committees we have, too, policies, subcommittees, and all that. So, so do we have to take our policy subcommittee and put an update on every, on every agenda? It's become a multi-agenda item?
We don't meet regularly, the subcommittees don't regularly meet.
But, they could, you know, they could. And so, if we, if we form that policy subcommittee, then do we have to have it as an agenda item and check down? So, that's the only thing I'd like us to think about is, and do we have any other committees or other situations that would cause us to always have to put something on the agenda? Just, just with a caution that it's not, it's not about the participation with the rec committee, but it's, it's the fact that the actual rec committee work is not part of the school committee purview. So, that would be the only, that's the part that comes to mind.
I just thought because the committee voted me in on a three-year term, it should be something.
Yep.
Just, I know I always make an update on other matters, and typically, I always have some kind of update, so I just figured, why not?
Yeah, no, I get it.
Put a bullet.
Well, and.
Going for a bullet here.
No, the updates are great, so it's not about that at all, it's just, it's the idea that, that's, so I don't know. If anyone else has any thoughts, or you want to think about it, or, you know, bring it up again next week, maybe we can put it on the agenda?
I think that's fair. I mean, just, you know, my preference for having, allowing people time to think about stuff, so. I think if we put it on the agenda, then if we have any other questions like that, we can do the research, run it through, anybody we need to run it through, just to make sure that, as you said, Mr. Pearson, that we're doing our due diligence and being above board about all the things that we're doing, and being consistent where consistency is called for.
Probably wise to put it on the agenda, that way we can.
Fine.
Focus on.
Good enough.
No, thanks for bringing it up, Sarah, I appreciate it.
No problem, thank you for listening.
Thank you. So, we don't need really a vote on the agenda items, this is really just an update, I believe, information only?
Yep.
Anything else you want to add?
No, the only thing I would add is to your point of, it's fluid, in some cases, it might be one month to the next. So, as an example, you have here for this August meeting, the role of the SRO, that is something within our MOU, that is an annual update. They will be here at our September meeting.
Yes.
So, that can be August, or it can be September, so I think that's just a good example.
Of the fluidity.
Of the public, the school safety update, and having our school resource officers that are here, that'll take place at our meeting in September.
Great, thank you.
Mr. Chair, do we have a point of clarification?
Yes.
No, I was curious if we had a point of clarification out there? No, okay.
Which, things are moving, we've moved around agenda items from, yes, we've moved things around.
Yeah, and that's fine.
Because we know there's a long meeting coming, we'll push things off, or whatever.
So, I guess the, then, to piggyback off of what Dr. Berdough said, for folks who are looking at home that we post this on the website, I love that we post it on the website, just understand that this is more of a guideline, so.
We have a question.
Yep. Okay, yes, is this on the, on the?
Yeah.
Yes, thank you, it's coming up, thank you.
It's not on the rec thing, no.
No, no, no.
Okay, okay. No, I just wondered if I could make a request for the board to consider. I was wondering if going forward, under other matters in your agenda, if you guys would consider adding the subtopics that you plan to talk about, like the other boards and commissions do, only because there've been a couple of times where there were things that I wanted to be made aware of, that I looked at the agenda, they weren't listed, and then I found out after the fact, they were discussed under other matters. So, I'm just wondering, I know that the other boards have kind of gone to that, I was just going to ask if maybe you guys would consider doing the same thing, so we, as the public, would know if there's something we're interested in that you're going to discuss. That's all.
I think, I think it's a great suggestion, and actually, you've had, you've given us a suggestion before. So, I think it's a very good idea, especially in a topic that we know is coming.
That's all I was.
Right, because I think other matters can also have unknown topics as well.
Agreed.
But ultimately, if we know, I respect the request, as your board does, too. I think it's a very good suggestion.
Thank you.
And thank you for that.
And then.
But, items under other matters, no matter what they are, unless they are listed, can't be voted or.
Agreed.
Taken into a debating situation. So, if someone, if Dr. Burrows is bringing up something that's going to happen on Wednesday, just as a point of information, that does not have to be as another item listed.
No.
Because you're not going to take any action, and you're not going to do anything with it, it's just a point of information.
And I appreciate, and, like, I personally really appreciate that as a committee member, if something comes up, and that we can put stuff in, but it's not, and that the community should know that, because there's been some confusion, because it's inherently confusing, that if something comes up in other matters, it's, it, by definition, it's something we're not voting on.
Or deliberating.
Correct.
Right.
And for anyone following, who didn't follow all of that, and I appreciate Heather pointing it out, because I try to bring my teacher hat in here, just to explain, so everyone understands what that is about.
Thank you.
That when we all set agendas in all of our public forums and all of our public meetings, those are the action items with, well, sorry, they're not always action items. They are items to be attended to in advance, to be notified to the public. And tend, under other matters, if we're going to mention things like that, we should do it with some transparency, if we know, and if not, other things could come up. But, thank you, thank you. Great. Okay, next on the agenda, it's our final topic before other matters, is forum planning for the Foxborough Public Schools mascot. I'll lead the way a little bit on this. I think back in June, some discussion of this came up, is what would be the next steps, or how do we move forward with the dialogue we had been having about the mascot? And it was mentioned, I suggested an idea about a public forum, and I think we actually all nodded to that, and when and how to do that. Obviously, the summertime is a very difficult time for everyone, and we're all moving in and out. So, basically, at our July meeting, we kind of selected the date of September 26 to add to our calendar for the specific and sole purpose of a public forum. And so, doing some research on this, and I'm suggesting to the committee, we can, we can design this, you know, however we need to, but I had submitted to this committee some ideas for planning and discussion purposes only. So, selecting a date and a time for the meeting to be September 26, suggesting a time probably of 6:30. We have tended to start our meetings at 6:30, we're certainly flexible to go wherever we want, but just an idea, to start at 6:30, because that's when we normally start. Location for the meeting would be a TBD, and I'll get a little bit into what some ideas and some thoughts I have about how the forum could be planned, and then talk about, a little about forum protocols. So, let me talk a little bit about what I think the forum planning would take place to do this. So, first of all, communicating to the public, not just in this forum, and not just on this microphone at this moment in time, but to send communication to our families and our students, and anyone in the community, that this forum is going to take place. I would suggest to the committee that we do that, that information at least a couple times. We now have a meeting where we can decide what and how to move ahead a little bit. I think we can try to push something out this week as fast as we can, to communicate with the community where we're going to be, so they don't just have to listen to this meeting to know something's happening. And then, I think a reminder in some period of time, 10 to 14 days from now, would be very good, which would be another reminder in advance of the meeting, so everyone's aware of it. One of the other things I'm suggesting for the committee is to plan for a forum, is to plan for the volume, or the lack of, or the interests that is going to attend the meeting. So, I was going to suggest to us that we, we set up a timeframe in the communication to the public, where we actually have people sign up to speak to the forum. So, communicate that out to the public, that there's going to be a forum, it's on this date at this time, but in order to speak, you need to register. So, we, I think, I think that would be a wise idea. Does that make some sense to you, to have some registration for it, just so we can manage the where, and the how, and the who? And I'm hoping, my suggestion is that that might work if we communicate effectively, which is what I'm suggesting. Does that make some sense, possibly some kind of registration?
Yeah, just as a guideline, correct?
Yeah, just as.
For us, for.
For people to know, for us to plan.
Like, well, it's, yeah, it's nice to know if it's going to go till 11:00 PM or 7:00 PM.
Exactly.
Right? I, for that alone, I'm grateful.
And I think another piece of a public forum is it's not going to be a standard school committee meeting, so there will not necessarily be a session for open public comment. So, if the public forum is set up, and everyone registers in advance, and everyone knows when they have to sign up, how to be there, and what to do, and what we're going to do. So, one of the things that I had, I thought of in preparation for the 26, which is a Tuesday, is to have registration, and my ideas that I put down at first were, register by 12:00 noon on the 21st of September, so 12:00 noon on the Thursday in advance of the Tuesday meeting.
Okay.
So, the 21st of September would be approximately 22, 23, 24 days from now, you know, that the people will be noticed. But, if they register by 12:00 noon on Thursday, then we can understand where and how the meeting will take place, and then communicate it to whoever is wished to attend, or have signed up for that, and give us some space to do that. I think that seems wise. Do you guys, you like that idea as well, too? My ideas that I'm just creating here, I was toying with, you know, do you register up to the day before, then the day before, you move to a new location, then you try to make sure everyone knows the day before?
I like that.
I'm not crazy about that. I just think if we give everyone some plenty of space to notice it, and be a part of it, they can think about and dialogue, and I'm sure they're going to find out right from here, when this is going to be. So, I think Thursday at 12:00 noon is pretty fair, you know?
I think it strikes a balance, sorry. I think it strikes a balance, and you want to give people time to formulate their thoughts, obviously, but also, yeah.
So, again, you know, if this is what we do, which I think is a good plan, then we'll communicate all this out right away. So, that's kind of dates, communication, ideas, and location TBD, because that'll tell us what we have to do. We only have so many spaces here to sit, and so, we might have to have another location somewhere, if we need more space, clearly. Let's talk about, a little bit about the plan for the night, for the forum. So, I did want to inform everyone that I reached out to the town moderator, reached out to Frank Spleen personally, invited him to moderate, and he is, at this time, he's agreed to do it. So, I think he'll be able to show up and moderate the meeting, and I think that would be a fabulous opportunity for us. He's experienced at moderating, as we all have seen and well know, and it gives him a great opportunity, gives us a great opportunity to sit and listen.
That's what I want.
And digest what we're hearing, and let him help manage, manage the meeting as well.
I really appreciate that.
Yeah, great, thank you. And then, I think the other piece of the puzzle would be just what's going to happen at the meeting, registration by a certain time. I did research a little bit about standard protocols, most people stay with the standard three minutes, so we'll notify everyone in all this communication that they'll be allowed three minutes to speak. Town moderator will moderate, manage all of that, and register and speak. Can't think of anything else, trying to cover all the bases, thoughts? These are some ideas?
Written.
Submissions.
Submissions, you might just want to mention that they will not be read.
Oh, yes, thank you. Sorry, that's a, that's a great point. In some of the letter drafts, the letter draft that I started here, did talk about we could get written submission from people as well, which we will always accept written submission, whether it's in our school committee inbox, or they'll be able to use this, this registration process for written submissions, but we won't read the written submissions at the event. Anyone that signs up, the time will be for the people to attend, be there in person, and sign up for the event. But, all written submissions will be given to the school committee. So, that's great.
Yes.
Great heads up, thank you for that as well, too.
That makes sense.
And I guess the only other final thing I'm looking, I'm looking at this, some ideas that we all wrote down here, is just that whoever registers is the person will speak. So, you know, pretty much, you know, you have to register, you're the speaker, and you're the registrant, that's what it's going to do. Not one person registering for five people, or things like that, everyone registers and speaks.
Oh, right, okay, I get that. Sorry, thanks.
And I guess the final thing I would say, which was just an idea, it's just a suggestion, it'd be great if everyone who attends the forum would, you know, entertain the time and stay for the entire forum, to really hear, to really hear the issue, which is at, which is at the feet of our public. I think it'd be great for everyone to participate as fully as they possibly can.
Good point.
I'm sure town meeting says that all the time, too. Until it gets to 10:20, and then it's, then everyone looks around and calls a new vote on something, so.
And the babysitters go home.
So, any, any questions on the forum planning, or any new ideas? I kind of wrote down the ideas that I had suggested to us, we'll try to craft a letter. Another small piece, I forgot, when will this, when will the registration be open to the public? I did speak to Dr. Burrows very briefly about this, how fast we could come up with a registration system. I'm confident we can do a very simple Google Form registration system.
Not Google.
Oh, sorry. Oh, my gosh, did I, did I walk into that wall?
Mr. Hayers left.
Yeah, I'm sorry, did he leave? I am so sorry. Microsoft Forms, Microsoft Forms, oops, a Microsoft Form registration process, which should be manageable, and we'll make sure is manageable. I would suggest that that's ready no later than next Tuesday, the 5th, but I think we might be able to get it ready before that. But, I think what we will do, or we should do, is communicate when it will be ready in the communication that goes out. So, if we have it ready before Tuesday, the 5th, then we will communicate that immediately.
Right.
Does that sound like a good spot? I won't forget you, hold on, one second, thanks, yeah.
No, that's fair. And then, just dotting the Ts, the Microsoft Form is, works across all platforms and mobile and all that, too. Okay, just making sure.
You know, that's, that's a super question, too. You know, that's, that's a super question, too. I guess we could, we should probably, she's, I'm off the cuff here, sorry. We should probably accommodate anyone who can't access the forum. I mean, they, they could, but they submit in writing to us, or if they can't access-
If they can't, they can use the community inbox.
Community inbox, or something?
The form is accessible.
Okay.
It doesn't matter what the, whether you're doing it from Android, iPhone.
Whatever.
Yeah.
It should, it should be accessible, yeah.
Yes. It's all in how you set it up, as far as from the settings, and-
And you, yeah.
Make sure that happens.
And if we work backwards from that, whatever the deadline is, is the deadline, however we get everyone in by the deadline.
Yes. And whatever the communication is from school committee, if you provide that to me, then I can send that out through school messenger.
Great.
Fine.
Great. And we can post, can we post on, on our school committee page if it's necessary as well, too?
Yes.
Right? Good.
We should, is more what I meant by yes.
Please.
Oh, yeah, thanks.
I'll get you next.
Yes.
Just so, just so everyone knows, please sit down, please sit down, thank you. And you can introduce yourself, too. Allowing a couple people to speak because they're gonna speak to the topic of discussion on this item with our school committee.
Got it, yeah. I just had a quick question about the forum. Do you guys have any idea about, like, the order of speakers? Is it just gonna be kinda first submission in that order, or is it gonna be kinda divided up by, like, pro, against, kinda? I don't know if you had any thought on that, just was curious.
I actually had no thought on it.
Okay.
So that's my honest answer. When you first come, first serve, or we could do pro and against, I-
My-
Committee, thank you, thank you.
Typical of my suggestions. It's not an answer, it's more of a process, but I know we're surrounded by many communities in the greater Boston area that have had forums on topics like this and others, and talking to a few other school committees, they have opinions on that, and it'd be nice to just say, what did you like about X? What did you not like about it? And so, that's a worthwhile, a couple of conversations to have.
So I, I don't, I don't have an answer either, so I appreciate the question. We have a meeting the week before this, don't we?
We do.
So we will, maybe we put that agenda item, we'll put the, back on the agenda, we'll put the mascot discussion back on that agenda, too, for any final planning-
Awesome.
-or anything we have to do to help meet, and that meeting would be two days before the deadline.
Yeah.
I believe it's the Tuesday before the Thursday suggested deadline, so we would have time. So, great question, thanks for that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Heather?
Matt, sorry. Heather Harding, 14th North High Street. Just a couple questions that you didn't answer, and if you can't answer them tonight, that's fine. Do you plan on having FCA show it live for people that can't make it?
I think our intent would be yes. Yeah, I would think so. And the only reason I'm looking over here is, and, and I'm just making sure, if we have to move it to another venue, can that venue accommodate? But if it was the high school auditorium, we know the high school auditorium. So yes, I think that would be a good plan. So, yes.
Okay. Will any non-residents be invited or in attendance, other than the fact that it's an open public meeting, so anybody can walk in?
I, actually, I don't, the only thing I don't know now is that I did have a contact from the Mashpee Wampanoag Tribe, from the Cape-
Okay.
-who was considering speaking, so I don't know if, if that person is available or willing to speak.
Okay, so that was my next question, is will any tribal members be invited by the school committee or the school administration to participate in the forum?
It's the only person I contacted months and months ago.
Okay.
So, not confirmed.
Okay. Would residents be able to invite tribal members to attend as non-residents, if they register ahead of time?
Hadn't thought much about that. I don't, I don't know. Any thoughts?
I would say this is a firm to discuss all the issues about the topic, and I think that any sources should be welcomed. That's just my personal feeling.
Yeah, I, um, no.
No, that was, that, that was, that said a lot. I, I, I like that, Sarah.
Yeah, I, I, I don't, you know, the only thing that comes to mind here is that I would hate to exclude residents from their opinion and their views for a multitude of others. But that's just me talking out loud.
Are you going to, are we, are we, not you, but are we going to limit the amount of people who speak?
As long as we can get it done. We can't be there for six hours, right?
Sure.
That's, that's what I only thought. I hadn't considered that, so I, I don't know what the perfect answer is.
Maybe we should think about, when we revisit this discussion, we should think about working backwards-
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
-on the math, and maybe setting a limit of, of total people. If there's an overflow, we would give residents priority. I, I don't know what the fair way to do it is, but-
Yep. Or, or, I'm just saying this out loud, or we just decide, we just decide that we want it to be this community only, to hear the voice of our community, and that excludes anyone out from outside the community. That's a possibility. I'm, I'm saying that to us.
But then that would exclude a tribal member, like that, you know what I mean?
That was a factual, general statement.
Yeah.
So it excludes everyone, if we want it to just be community voice.
I'm sorry, Pete Charbonneau, 223 E Street. A compromise solution could be any X outsider could submit a written notice to the committee as well, to have their voice heard.
Which would be great, but we're not gonna-
But not speak at the event.
We're not gonna read those. Thank you for that, but we're not gonna read it, so the impact at the forum would be minimal, although the information would be there.
Well, that's, that's, that's actually a really nice, that's a really interesting compromise, 'cause the, the forum is for listening and hearing. The written communication should have the same land as, as the forum, you know, 'cause the, the committee will still read it.
Related to that, and you did mention, we have got another meeting between now and then, and the forum will be open before and after our next school committee meeting. I would advocate we revisit, you know, continue this discussion now. I don't wanna stifle anything, but revisiting these things depend, depending upon the numbers we're looking at, and-
That's a-
And we can report out-
It's a budget check at the next meeting.
The only kinda problem with that is timing.
Timing.
Then, then if, you know, you don't wanna, you don't want to say to people, well, you know, you're on hold, we gotta let you, you know, it's kinda hard to reach out to people and only give them two weeks' notice. Is there a way to bump the date of the forum out, so that we can get answers to these questions?
I, I don't, I don't think we can dump the date, the forum, 'cause we, we, we also have a timeframe, too. I, I, I don't know what you guys say, but I, I certainly would support, I, I really liked your suggestion. I support focusing on our community, let the community members speak their piece, and making sure we have plenty of time for them.
Could, could I, sorry, Andrew Steele, 6th Fox Lane, just to interject a little. I think someone who spoke at one of these previous meetings actually mentioned, in the census from 2020, who confirms that we have a 0.00% population of Native people in Foxborough, and I think it is of some significance that they would have some input if they're available, especially someone, as you've tried contacting from the Mashpee Wampanoag Tribe. So I think it might be worth potentially considering an outsider, and specifically giving priority to someone who has that kind of-
I agree.
Well, I think, I think then the alternative is probably for justice, we can discuss it on the 19th, and then go from there. That's about, that's all we got.
That just isn't a lot of time. I mean, I thought the whole point of tonight's meeting was so that we would know what was gonna happen at the forum. That's only a couple weeks before.
But what's your point, Heather, as far as, if somebody else is gonna speak?
Yeah, like, like timing, so it's kind of hard to say to someone, you know, well, you may and may not be able to speak, and we can't tell you till two weeks before, and they live on the vineyard, and they gotta get over here from the vineyard to say, you know? And, and just to clarify, the 0.00 is the state census, but we do have, like, 20 Native Americans in Foxborough, but it's not enough to reach .1%.
But Heather?
Yes.
Rightfully so.
Yes.
If we have, if we meet on the 19th, they will have a week advance notice before the forum.
I know, that's my point, only a week, to try to make travel arrangements, and that doesn't seem like a lot. But, but, whatever, it's your decision. I'm just asking a question, obviously.
No, no, thank you, I'm glad, I'm clear, so, yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
So we won't know till the 19th?
Can I bring up a quick other point, or question? We still have capability under the Attorney General to allow Zoom. If we do the meeting here, I understand space is limited, but we do have Zoom capability. Would we allow that in some, oh, now I'm like going off on a road, but like, would we allow that in some cases where people can't communicate if it's an indigenous voice? I, I don't know, like, I don't know what the right thing is, I'm just, again, I'm trying to compromise, that was a-
I am confident that if we allowed Zoom, you have to allow Zoom for everyone.
Yeah.
So, and then the question would be if it moves to another venue where Zoom is not as capable. So, well, let's decide on the 19th.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. So then my next question was, will there be any debate or discussion that night, or will it just be you guys receiving input?
There will be no debate and discussion as a forum, and we have a forum policy. Our intent is to listen and hear.
Okay.
And then part of our communication will say that what would be the next step, which would be debate, to, the first debate option for the item would be the next school committee meeting.
Okay. And if a registered speaker brings, like, a handout or a written statement, do you just want one copy to be given to the secretary, or do you want a copy for each of you that night? Do you want a copy for the audience? What would, what is your requirement?
My suggestion would be, because everything that's submitted through open public comment, or, or is written comments in this meeting becomes part of the public record, I think one and, one is fine.
One copy?
That's just my-
I would agree, one copy.
And I don't wanna create barriers to people who wanna come and speak their mind. I just think it becomes onerous.
Okay.
And then the, the information is there.
Yep.
It's accessible, and-
That makes a lot of sense.
Yeah.
Perfect, one copy, perfect, okay. I know it says on here that you have to complete the entire form. Like, what will that consist of? Like, I mean, I assume it's just name, address, that kinda stuff. You're not gonna ask people, like, to submit what they're gonna say on September?
No, 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 no.
Okay.
It was just to make sure we have all the information, that you, people weren't just leaving out information or skipping boxes.
Okay.
For example, do you live in town?
Got it. Yes.
Helpful to know.
Exactly.
Whether you do or don't, I mean, it's helpful to know.
Right. Will the audience be allowed to ask questions that night of other people that are speaking?
The plan was not for that. The plan was to give everyone three minutes to speak and be listening, and, you know, statements from the public, from a forum, so that was the plan.
Okay. Will people be able to, if they choose, to cede their three minutes to someone else?
No.
Okay.
The plan, and we were gonna put this in the letter, that the person that registers has to be the one speaking.
Okay.
So not, not a fact that people can, can type in and get time for them. So the goal would be to have the speakers that wish to speak register and are monitored. Everyone agree to that?
I do.
Does it make sense, that if you wish to speak, you speak?
I was, I was more thinking in the, in the pursuit of speed, you know, if I'm gonna stand up and make six points, instead of me having six pieces of paper typed out and lining up six people, can those six people say, she speaks on behalf of us? Because fall is a really busy time with, like, football, cheerleading, and a lot of people are like, how am I gonna get to that meeting to speak for three minutes? I can't do it.
Follow-up, if I may?
Yes.
Just to see if I'm understanding the spirit of your question. In that case, would it work in your mind, in that, in that scenario, for somebody to have registered to speak and say, I'm actually speaking on behalf of duh, 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 they're all residents of town, and here's, 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 here's my-
Well, that's what I was thinking.
All those people have the capability to submit written, the written thoughts for the work.
But that won't be read at the forum.
But I think that both can hap- like, they can certainly submit-
I was more just thinking for the, in, in the pursuit of speed, instead of me getting six people to line up and read three minutes.
No, no, that's absolutely preferable.
If I had their names, and they, and they registered, and I said, I am speaking on behalf of these six Foxborough residents, and they, and here are all their names, and they're all Foxborough residents, just for me to read the statement, instead of hand them each a three-minute piece of paper and have a cycle through. I'll do whatever you want. I was just trying to figure out what made the most continuity-
Three minutes per person, I think, is what we did talk about. And I, I, I think that's important, too, because if you have a community member who doesn't have the ability to find someone else to proxy for them or something like that, that they only get three minutes as well, too. So I think three minutes per person is what the real design was this for. What do you guys think?
Yeah, and I would personally, I mean, this is just me thinking of, knowing that I'm gonna be reading all this stuff many times, is if, if somebody submits on, submits and speaks on behalf of six other people, that carries weight.
But he's-
I don't need to see it six times in the data table.
No, no, but she's saying no.
But she's trying to clarify, Brent, she's trying to say she's only gonna get three minutes to speak for the six.
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
She's asking for 18 minutes as a single person.
Well, not necessarily 18. I'm saying I could speak for six, instead of making it 18 minutes, I could do it in six. That's all I'm trying to say, is if I have to get six people to line up and each speak for three minutes, or I can just keep going and do it for five, that's all my, my question was. But if you want the different people, that's fine.
And, well, no, in that case, in that case, if you have six bullet points, instead of speaking for six minutes, have somebody deliver three, another person deliver three.
That's what I can do. I was just asking.
I think, I think that's probably wise.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. So you'll let us know how you're gonna figure out the order, right? Just so that we can figure out how to line people up?
We'll talk in the next meeting for the order.
Perfect.
Yeah.
I think that's everything.
Yeah.
Awesome.
Thanks so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Really good questions.
Thanks for your questions, too.
Thank you.
Any further discussion or questions from the committee? So to synthesize everything, we have a plan for the night, the, the night. We have a plan for our meeting, a few items for the meeting of the 19th, and all of these items, as I've just mentioned to you today, will be put into the letter, so that we can communicate to the pub, to the public and to our constituents right away, hopefully going out this week. That would be the plan?
Yes. I have two follow-up questions.
Yep.
Just 'cause they're in my mind now, and why wait? One, just to clarify, we're not gonna accept video submissions. Just asking. It's fine if it's not. I don't wanna complicate things further. It's gotta be workable, and right now, if you have the technology, do you have a video camera, you also, in the same device, have the technology to convert everything you say into text, so that's fine with me. I'm just making sure I'm clarifying that. That's question one, and if you-
What do you think, well, what do you-
If people wanna mull it over, that's fine, too, but I just, I just wanted to throw it out there.
Yeah, we probably, I think we can talk more about it. You know, my first thought is that we, our, our community inbox is for written submission, right?
So, yeah.
So if we default to community inbox and our normal practices and procedures, maybe we default to written only?
That's what I was thinking, but I wanted to say it out loud.
But you're right, video cameras are so easy.
Um, okay.
You want me, you want us to reclarify that on September 19?
Yeah, sure.
So let's, let's ponder it, you know? I'm, I'm thinking written might be the, the most efficient. I'm, I would be more concerned about, we all get a video, we can't open it, or something like that.
We'll be consistent, like, the retinal be a, a little more consistent, unfortunately, like-
I think so, too. But so, can we put that one to bed, then?
You can put that one to bed, and then, and then the last one that I'll trouble your mind with, Mr. Chair, wondering if there's wisdom in this, in the survey form people fill out, like, just a box, are you willing to have this published? And then we could literally just, because we've said over and over again, this stuff is public information, and it is, and people can submit a formal request, but there's also, there's also the technology existing on our school committee site to literally just-
It's a great point.
Paste.
To post.
To paste people's written comments. If, because the, the, the reason I ask is because, the reason the community, and I, and everyone here loves FCA, and, you know, would say, obviously, we wanna see if we can work with FCA to make this thing available. FCA works real hard to make sure their stuff is online as well, and we get the stuff in community inbox. I, I realize I'm opening another can, but it wouldn't be that much of a technological leap to say, all right, well, if you submit something else, then we're gonna, it'll be also accessible on this page of the website here.
So, so would, we could do that, yeah, or we could also just put a disclaimer in the submission, that just so you understand, all submissions to the school committee, just like our, our mailbox, or our public information could be, could be accessed. We can do that, too, just so everyone knows.
Don't we have a disclaimer?
I don't, I'm not-
I think you have to be very careful about just taking people's stuff and putting it up on your website. Yeah, yeah, I wouldn't do it. You're going to have to virtually go through every one of those and make sure that there's nothing that's-
Hate speech.
Has a name, or has anything else in it that, that should not be on our website. So, you know-
Thank you, Mr. Yupna.
If you wanna be able, if somebody wants to hand it, you can give it to them, but you don't wanna be posting it yourself out there. But maybe we, maybe we do post that everyone understands it's public information, just like in our-
Yeah.
-community inbox, so that it would assess it. I, I don't think we have any reason to post it.
No, I, I'm very, thank you all for entertaining that. I just wanted to put it out there, in terms of we're talking about access to information.
We can say we discussed it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
All right.
That's important.
Any further matters? We got some work for the September 19 meeting. We'll get this letter out right away.
Thanks for the pre-work on this.
You're welcome.
Mr. Pearson.
You're welcome. Yeah, and thank you all for your comments as well, and your questions.
Very good questions.
The goal is to try to, you know, be as clear as we can for everyone, so they all understand. So thank you very much. Thank you.
Very good questions.
I think the final topic is other matters.
Everyone's gonna be-
No, no, I'm just, I'm allowing you. I'm affording you the, whatever.
Wow, we've had some exciting things happen at REC over the summer, and I did want to share. The booth program went amazing this summer, lots of kids. The booth complex renovation project is moving along nicely. We will be updating the basketball, Highland Rank tennis courts, and the skate park. So also, all three ball fields were redone in conjunction with the schools. So that was a really good collaboration on all parts. So that was exciting. And pickleball is a huge success. The Stern Family Charitable Trust made a $10,000 donation. So we're getting extra tables, benches, fences, et cetera. So that, those are all community things, but they do affect our students and our schools, too. So thank you all. On a personal note, I got to welcome a new granddaughter, Elena Rose. And we have a new grandfather here, Raymond Richard, that's about to turn a month old. So a couple of grandparents on the school committee, so congratulations, Richard.
Congratulations to you, too.
So, happy news, so just wanted to share.
Well, you know, I wanted to ask you, the pickleball courts, are they off-Pason Road, or where are they?
They're off-Pason, M.P.S. and Complex, yeah.
That's great. It's actually, I can tell you from a pickleball standpoint, anyone watching, it's like one of the fastest-growing things across the state. I, in my other job, I get, I run tennis for the MIA. I organize tennis. And I probably get one call a week about pickleball courts. Because the challenge is that there's not necessarily new space. So we're fortunate here in Foxborough, which is great, that pickleball courts are in one location. But in a lot of towns, pickleball courts are integrated. And so how to do pickleball courts? So if anyone liked to know, you just have to do them in a different color other than white. The white lines are for tennis courts, and the fluorescent orange can be pickleball, or whatever you need to. There's your pickleball answer.
Thank you.
There you go. Community members, other, other?
Just bringing CPAC back up, now that the school year's starting, the CPAC meetings are going to be starting up again. If there are any members interested in joining CPAC or being part of that, we generally meet the second Wednesday of every month. And we are planning to have a meeting soon in September. The date is not final. If anybody's interested in that, please check the Foxborough CPAC Facebook page.
And Ms. Thaksin, can you please remind some of our parents new to the schools what CPAC is?
Thank you. I say CPAC so often. It is the Special Education Parent Advisory Council. We are actually not held by the school. We're actually held by the town. Every town has that. We're here for resources to help work with the school. So if anybody's interested in being part of that, please check the Facebook page.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Brett?
I just want to say thanks beyond all the thanks that have been rightly given to summer facilities work and IT, to all the teachers who did mountains of curriculum work over the summer, coaches who've been working throughout the summer, music teachers who've been working out the summer, extracurricular leaders who've been working on throughout the summer to make a smooth and exciting start to the year. Because it's no small feat.
Thank you. Nathan, anything?
Summer's not over yet.
Thank you!
We'll have a full week till school.
Actually, Mr. Irman, do you happen to know how many days? I'm just...
Eighty-four days?
You do? Okay, I was curious. For those who don't know, he always knows the number.
Always knows. It's until vacation, though. You're going to have to do the math for the September 19th on the next vacation.
My brain hasn't got it. So thanks, give them a week of break.
Senior slump already.
So Nathan, how are practices going? So all the high school students started, football started a week, 10 days ago on the 18th Friday, and all the other sports started practices on Monday, I think, last Monday. Have you talked to your friends, or is everyone tired, or doing well?
Very busy out there on the fields behind the high school, the turf and the grass field. There's always...
Yeah, great. Well, it's great to have everyone back, too, and enjoying the activities. I hope they're all thinking the same, too, although they've probably got some tough practices they've gone through here and there. Yeah, good luck, good luck.
Thanks for all your work on student council, too. Thanks.
Dr. Burles?
Just to echo what Dr. Burdos and Mr. Ruder have already said, our teachers have worked so much this summer, doing summer curriculum work. And we welcomed new staff last week. That was fantastic. And over the course of these next couple of days, our curriculum directors, our department heads, our building admin, and myself have planned quite a bit of professional development to get our staff ready for the school year and ready for kids. So we're really excited, and I'm grateful that we had such committed staff throughout the summer working to prepare for this school year. We're really ready to go and excited about the next couple of days.
That's great.
Thank you. Dr. Burdos?
I think I pretty much hit it in the update, but parents, I'm sure they're starting to look towards getting schedules ready for students to come back next week. So, you know, as the dwindling days of summer, sorry, Nathan, are coming. No, we just, we're really excited. It's going to be a great school year. And as everyone's already said, all that's been planned, and we look forward to seeing our students next week.